If you will. So today is Monday, June 21st, 2021, and it is 5 o'clock PM. We'll call the Lansing City Council Committee of Order and ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Spadefor.
Present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
President, participating remotely from South Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Wood.
President, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley. I don't see her yet. We'll watch her bring her in. Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Jackson.
President, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Dunbar.
There we go. President, participating remotely from South Lansing.
Councilmember Garza.
I am present, participating remotely from South Lansing, Michigan.
Six members present. You have a quorum.
Thank you, and you all should have an email from Councilmember Betts from this morning requesting excused absences for this evening's meetings. I haven't heard from Councilmember Spitzley, so I will keep an eye out for her to pop in. All right, the first item of business is the minutes from June 7th, 2021. Mr. Vice President.
Sure, we have three pages of meeting minutes from the 7th, so I would move those as presented.
Is there any questions or discussion on the minutes?
Mr. Chair.
Madam, yes, Councilmember Wood.
In my packet, unless I printed it off wrong, I did have the Pension and Retiree Board Plan Fund. Is that considered part of the minutes?
I put it in as part of the minutes because it was a presentation we didn't have prior to the meeting.
Okay, so just so that we're clear that that's part of the minutes that are being approved.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so, thank you.
And if we could, after this motion, and I do the roll call, Councilmember Spitzley is here, so I'd like her to report in.
Sure, absolutely.
Chris Spitzley reporting remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
On the minutes of June 7th, Councilmember Spadefor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
And Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is public comment on agenda items. Members of the public wishing to make comments have three minutes to do so. In order to signify your interest in providing public comment, you must raise your hand, your virtual hand. To do that on a Mac, it is Option Y. On a PC, it is Alt-Y. And on your telephone, it is star nine if you've dialed in using the calling number. If you have another type of device, it is that you click on the raise hand button somewhere on your screen. So we'll just sit for a minute, and most of the people here are names I recognize as members of the administration or external agencies. Oh, there's someone that wished to make public comments, so we will. If the person named Shehan would please identify yourself by first and last name for the record, you will have three minutes to speak, after which time we will close public comment.
Thank you, President Spadefor. Justin Shan, Executive Director of the Lansing Promise. We're really excited actually about a presentation that I believe you all will be receiving tonight, about a real pretty innovative partnership between the city and the Office of Financial Empowerment, between MSU-FCU, between Lansing Promise, between the district, and really about the community. So I just, I want to preface this by saying Kelsey and the team from Bit, of whom you will learn if you haven't yet, have really done some pretty effective and innovative work putting Lansing not only on the map that we all know it is, but more importantly, beginning to lead the nation in best practice and modeling out when it comes to both Promise, CSA, financial engagement, and student. So number one, thank you, City Council, for supporting and moving all this work forward, either by your support directly or even indirectly, right, of all the incredible staff and administration that continue to do it. We know that, of course, we believe in that inherent value and worth of every young person in the city. So what happens when we continue to invest at every level? So we're really encouraged about it. My bio now has a question, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it there. This is all family, but we're very excited, so keep your eyes.
Thank you, Justin. Thanks for being here, and thanks for your work in the promise. Looks to be, that's all we have for public comments, so we will move on to our first item, which is a special presentation from the Department of Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement for their Behavioral Insights Team Program, which I believe is the Bit program that Mr. Shehan just referenced. So we will turn it over to, is Delisa here? Yes, Delisa, there you are. Oh, no, no, there's Amber.
I can take it. Hi. Good afternoon, and thank you all for being here tonight. I'm going to be very, very brief. Kelsey Gohn is here to give you the meat of the presentation about the work that they've done with us. Behavioral Insights Team is an international, very well-respected consultancy that has a lot of experience working on ways to use behavioral science to make things happen. And so they've done a pilot program with us, and Kelsey's going to tell you all about it and its impact. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna add one last thing, which is that this was all part of our What Works Cities grant, and Kelsey will tell you more about that as well.
Thank you, Amber. Kelsey, take it away.
All right, thanks, Amber. Excited to share with you all about a pilot we've been working on with Lansing for the past two years. So first, I'm going to give you a little bit of background on the project. Next, I'm going to go over the pilot results and talk about some insights we have there, and then finally discuss a couple of recommendations and next steps we have for the community of Lansing to use this work moving forward. So this project, like Amber said, is part of the What Works Cities Economic Mobility Initiative. So this is something funded by Bloomberg Philanthropies, the Ballmer Group, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. It really is focusing on tackling income inequality and declining economic mobilities in cities across the US. Lansing is one of nine cities taking part in this initiative, including cities down the road, like Detroit, all the way through, you know, cities like Tulsa, Oklahoma. This project, like Justin mentioned, is really focused on the work of Bold Lansing. In case you haven't heard of them, their program that's supported by a number of partners in the Lansing community to offer financial education and supports and services to families as they progress throughout their post-secondary education journey. And really, the hope with Bold Lansing is to create a simple and cohesive experience that supports families at every step along the way. This project started out two years ago, and Bold Lansing didn't exist, or at least didn't exist yet for Lansing residents. When we came here, they asked us to think about how we might be able to bring the different services, each one individually amazing, into kind of one package for the residents in Lansing. We were able to do some workshops and research labs with residents to understand, you know, what accessing services were like for them, and really heard that they wanted one place that they could go to access these services, and that's how we got to the idea of Bold Lansing. Bold Lansing to really kind of rebrand and relaunch this initiative as an integrated service model that was focused on having kind of one place that Lansing residents could go to access all of these services. In order to launch Bold Lansing, this pilot had three different parts. So first was really building awareness of the partnership and making residents understand what Bold Lansing was. Second was piloting some service offerings together, and today we're going to be talking about that one in full here. And then third was talking, figuring out what it looked like for the sustainability of the partnership long term. So there were these three different parts, and again, we're going to be discussing that kind of pilot opportunity between the Financial Empowerment Center and Lansing Promise today. So this pilot really focused on three different goals. You know, what did it look like to serve Lansing Promise scholars at the Financial Empowerment Center? We thought that it was a really great opportunity to pilot these two programs together and figure out how they might be able to work to really bring the benefits from both into kind of one more cohesive experience for Lansing residents. And we thought that it was a great place to start with these Promise Scholars because, you know, they're starting out on their journey in adulthood and really could benefit from some of the services that the Financial Empowerment Center has. So first, we wanted to validate that, yes, these were, you know, services that Promise Scholars did need, hear a little bit more about what their experience at the FEC was like, and then finally learn some about what the best way to reach these students might be. We did a pilot over the past year or so. We had both kind of a baseline survey and a follow-up survey to understand what was going on with these students, and then we ran the pilot for about six or seven months in the middle. Of course, you'll recognize this pilot took place in 2020, so there was a couple of changes due to COVID, but I think the most important one for you all to know is that we had originally planned to do in-person outreach in the Lansing School District to high school seniors, but instead we ended up flipping our model to be a kind of virtual outreach to the same students that we were originally attending to focus on, but instead as first-year Promise Scholars. Who were we able to reach with our pilot? We targeted our outreach to first-year Promise Scholar students. We were able to get about 200 of them to respond to our baseline survey. We then promoted our opportunities to all of those students, and we had about 36 students attend sessions at the FEC, and then finally had about 75 complete our follow-up survey. We'll learn a little bit more about each one of these groups throughout the presentation, but if you really want to dig in on who these scholars were, they're all Lansing Promise Scholars, but we have more detail about the demographics of these students in the appendix of this survey. So what did we learn about scholars' need for Financial Empowerment Center services? So we had a pretty good representation of students within the kind of Lansing Promise program, responded to our survey. We had mostly first-year students, a couple more men than women, but we did have the kind of overall demographics of respondents aligned to that of the Lansing School District. We learned that students were actually a bit better off in terms of their financial habits than we had thought. So most students were doing really foundational practices, like having a savings and checking account that they used regularly. Some were using budgets, and students scored about average on the CFPB Financial Well-being Scale. You know, about 20% reported some debt, and students tended to spend money on things that you would think 18- to 20-year-olds would spend money on. But the kind of takeaway here is that, you know, actually, students started in a bit of a better place than we had expected, and I think really set them up for success throughout the rest of the pilot here. I'll pause here for a minute. We've got some quotes from students who filled in our initial survey, just kind of giving you a taste of how students are thinking about their kind of finances and their financial future. So some students were looking for help, you know, just looking at things, you know, how to budget. Some were looking for, you know, more explanations on kind of big financial goals, like buying a car. Many students wrote in and talked some about, you know, the challenges that they're thinking about in terms of kind of college debt and college tuition, even though these are all Lansing Promise Scholars, that's still weighing heavily on their mind. And then finally, we saw a lot of comments from students about how COVID has really changed the way that they are thinking about their financial future and the uncertainty that it brings for them. So this is just a snippet of all of the responses we got, but I think it's really good to hear from students in their own words about where their minds are on these topics. All right, next, I'll share a little bit about the scholar experience at the Financial Empowerment Center. So we had 36 scholars visit the FEC during the pilot. And again, that was kind of that six-month pilot period. All of the outreach was done remotely, and all of these sessions were conducted remotely. So while not huge numbers in terms of, you know, sheer magnitude, this does represent a pretty good chunk of scholars who are engaging in these services. And more importantly, these scholars didn't just go once. We had these scholars account for more than 80 sessions. That meant that some of them were going back at least twice, many of them more than that. There are a couple of differences between the attendees and who responded to our baseline survey, but I think the most interesting one is that, you know, we kind of got two groups of students who migrated towards the FCVC. Some who were kind of secure in their kind of financial place, but really eager to learn about these services, and then others who were really struggling and in need of significant support. Both of those groups kind of self-selected into going to the FEC, and we didn't see nearly as many scholars kind of in the middle. And that's something that we've charged the partnership to think about moving forward of how they might be able to reach these students who didn't necessarily opt into the FEC at this time. At the FEC, students made, you know, kind of progress on different goals that they had set out for themselves. So we had set out a variety of different goalposts for them to work towards and have incentives to work on while they were at the FEC, and many of them accomplished them, like doing a personal savings goal, you know, conducting a credit check or completing a budget, all things that we think are kind of the building blocks of, you know, their financial future. And serving the scholars at the FEC was a bit different than the traditional FEC client in that they didn't have regular expenses that they needed to worry about, so we needed to tweak the services a little bit in order to fulfill them, but they brought an enthusiasm to learn that really was exciting for the folks at the FEC. And when we think about, you know, was the kind of combination of these programs successful, and did these scholars benefit from the FEC? I think the answer, at least from the surveys that we've done and the experience of the students at the FEC, was yes. They learned new skills. They went back multiple times. We even had some students refer their friends who are outside of our pilot group, which was really great to see that this was a service they thought was valuable. And then finally, in between the baseline and follow-up survey, we did see an increase in those financial well-being scores for the scholars that participated at the FEC. A couple lessons from the outreach and communication that we did with scholars. I think this is something that was really interesting to the partnership, but a couple of things I want to highlight for you all. One is that, you know, having trusted messengers do some of the outreach was really important for this pilot. So Promise was able to be a really great partner for us to make sure that scholars knew about this opportunity and knew that it was legitimate. So if you're looking for other programs to reach this group, tapping different resources within the community that they're already familiar with will be very important. Additionally, text messages were the most effective for this audience, and a lot of them actually opted into giving us their phone numbers to receive follow-up communication. In social media, it didn't work out for us, which was a bit of a surprise, given that we thought that, you know, the kind of 18- to 25 range would really be that audience, but really texting was the one that worked for us. And then finally, having small incentives like we offered at the FEC, and then also offered in exchange for the survey participation, really helped kind of gain the folks who were able to actually participate. All right, so where do we go from here? I think there's a lot of next steps that the partnership can do to kind of expand these services to folks within the Lansing community. So I think there was a lot of enthusiasm from the partners to be able to expand this to the, you know, current Promise Scholars and the scholars for next year to identify more opportunities to share this information with them. And next, I think, looking at opportunities to further integrate these financial empowerment services within the Lansing School Districts, more similar to that kind of original pilot that we had intended. They can use some of the lessons we had about virtual engagement, but then also take those and, you know, do those for in-person outreach as well. And then finally, hopefully, the partners can find even more opportunities to integrate their service offerings. And I think over the past two years, I've seen that naturally occur. A couple of opportunities for you all as council members to support this work is one, I think, continue to invest in financial empowerment services for young people in your community. This pilot found that this is something that students, while they're doing okay, there's still definitely a desire to have these services, and reaching people who are struggling at this age can really help them kind of get on the right track for the future. Additionally, integrating financial empowerment into any sort of COVID recovery planning that you're doing coming out of the pandemic can really set families and students up for success here. So I think using this as a tool to maybe reach these students and reach families who might have disengaged and offer them another support service can really help your community at this time. COVID has made a lot of financial issues more salient for people, and it might be a good entryway to introduce this resource that the Lansing community has. Next, I'd say, really just continue to champion the work of the Bold Lansing Partnership. They're truly pioneers in the work that they're doing in terms of offering this set of services and really bringing them together in an integrated fashion. And you can definitely promote these opportunities to people within the Lansing community, making sure every resident has the ability to access these resources, but then also championing this work outside of Lansing, so that way other cities can copy the work that Lansing is doing, and more and more people can, you know, progress in their post-secondary journeys as well. And then finally, I would say, prioritize the use of data and evidence in terms of your program designs. We were able to gather a lot of learnings from this project in particular because we had an evaluation component, and it's something that as you look for more work in this area or other things that you do within the Lansing community, we'd ask you to continue doing this sort of, you know, evidence-based policy approach. All right, that is it in terms of my presentation. I know we've got a couple of minutes for questions here as well. And there's more detail in that deck that was shared with you. We just couldn't go as much in detail here today since we've got a packed agenda.
Thank you very much, Kelsey. Are there questions from committee members? I'm gonna, there we go. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. Let me get out of, there we go. Kelsey, in listening to your presentation, the students that have gone through the training, have you thought about using those as trainers? Train the trainer type of thing? Oftentimes, people that are closer to your own age and experience, you're more likely to listen to. So have you thought about that possibility?
That's a great idea, Carol. I think we've thought a little bit about using the folks who attended the FEC as kind of peer ambassadors to promote the work a little bit more, but I think there definitely could be some opportunities to have them deliver parts of it as well. Fortunately, at the FEC, we had a counselor who was in their age group, more similar, to be able to convey some of this advice, but I think there's an opportunity to definitely explore using some of these folks who went through the FEC to provide some of this work in the future.
I think that would be something good for them, as well as for, again, them that are used as a trainer to sustain and to make sure that this is a role model type of situation where you're keeping up with it as, you know, as you go on in life. So I'd highly recommend that, that part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions before we move on? Well, I really appreciate, Kelsey, and the work of the Department and the program that you're doing here. This is really good stuff, and hopefully, now that we're moving beyond sort of the pandemic phase of implementation, you'll have an opportunity to do those in-person events as well. So, thank you very much. All right, that concludes that part of our agenda. The next item on our agenda is a resolution, appointing Maureen Saxon as an at-large member of the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority. I do believe we have Maureen with us this evening. And I believe she should be moved over. Here we go. Maureen, welcome to Committee of Order. How this typically works is maybe you get just a couple of minutes to introduce yourselves to the committee, explain a little bit about yourself and why it is you want to serve the city on the LEPFA board, although it should be pretty self-explanatory. It's an amazing organization, right, Councilmember Garza? He's our representative for there. So, but go ahead and share a little of that detail, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Sure, I've been living and working in Lansing since 1992, living, I'm sorry, in Holt, and then just until the last couple of years now in DeWitt. But my kids went for 14 years to Immaculate Heart of Mary in South Lansing. And so I lived right off of Willoughby Road. And let's see, I was in state government for about 10 years and opened my own public relations firm, which I had, it was a small boutique-ish firm, boutique firm, for about 11 years. And then I joined a Detroit-based PR firm called Van Dyk Corn. And I opened their Lansing office, and I am right downtown in the One Michigan Building, which is PNC, the PNC Bank Building. And I have always been interested in doing, getting more involved in Lansing. I have a lot of friends and colleagues and mentors over the years that have played roles in boosting Lansing in various ways, shapes, and forms. And my youngest child has just graduated from high school, and I, timing-wise, I thought this was a good time to give back to a city that I really want to see grow and and become much better known within the state of Michigan as a destination point.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Questions from the committee? Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spadefor. Maureen, if you could tell us that knowing what we've been dealing with COVID and all the issues that are out there as far as entertainment venues and things like that, have you thought about some of those issues coming onto this board?
Yeah, I have, actually. I started thinking about it just before COVID hit. To give one example, with sports and athletic opportunities, I think that, you know, there's the, it's like all these little fiefdoms of kind of high-level interest in sports. Right before COVID hit, a major professional tennis tournament came to town, and that was so under the radar. We hosted one of the players at our house, and, you know, I know that people were scrambling to find places for these players to stay, but some of them were college, but were good enough to be semi-pro, and then others were full-time pro players. They're not, you know, as well-known as, you know, the ones that are Lindahl and Federer, but that's just one example. I have friends who are in the whole soccer world, and I am not in that world. But it just seems to me like we could collaborate with some of the private entities that are, that host these things or that put these things together, and because it's only to the benefit of everyone to kind of join forces and publicize these kinds of sporting events. But I think, you know, I just, I just think that if we, if, you know, if we don't kind of see borders, because real people don't see borders. They don't know. They just think Lansing. I mean, it doesn't matter if it's East Lansing, or if it's Holt or DeWitt, or, you know, Grand Ledge. I mean, if it's an event, then I think it's to the benefit of any, of anyone to make sure that the city of Lansing has a role in it, or has at least a consulting role in it. I mean, I just think that if the more, the more official partners that can come together can only help, you know, raise and lift the visibility of Lansing and the surrounding area.
Thank you for that answer. I know one of the things that I've advocated for for a long time is the idea of doing a regional authority that would have all of the region paying in to the debt and the things that we have here versus just the city of Lansing. So hopefully, that might be something that you'll keep on your radar after, assuming you will be appointed this evening, and that would be something that you would consider as you're moving through the process. So thank you.
Mr. President Hussein.
Sure, just for full transparency, we were actually originally vetting Mrs. Saxon for a position on the, I believe it's the LEDC, LBR, A, and TIFL board. And she came before Economic Development and Planning not all that long ago, and she was just as fantastic then as she was tonight. Maureen Saxon, we truly appreciate your willingness, desire to serve the city, particularly as an employee within the city limits. But I did raise some objections to the appointment at that time, and I did that because she is not a resident of the city. And for me, when you look at particularly that board that she was being vetted for that day, when you look at, you know, the fact that they essentially provide economic direction, economic development direction to the city, and then they leverage certain tools, like the revolving fund, that really should be leveraged all across the city. It should not be focused maybe historically like we always have, just on the downtown, kind of the real town and the historic core, including Old Town as well. So I did raise some objection and did speak to the fact that I really believed we needed a diverse group of candidates from the city of Lansing that come from all parts of the city and are intimately aware of kind of the need here in the city with regard to blight elimination, with regards to economic development, moving our commercial districts and kind of corridors forward, so that really all, right, could experience some measure of ascension in the city. So I wanted to actually thank Maureen. She was very gracious, and I think, understanding that date of that message. My understanding is that Andy, the mayor, actually got with her. They had a conversation. I knew at the time that the statute was silent, whether or not for that particular board, somebody needed that residency piece. And so I knew that she qualified to be on that board, but it was more of a question of whether or not it was appropriate. And so my understanding was that the mayor got with Maureen. They had an understanding that, you know what, that makes sense. Let's look for another position on another board where maybe my candidacy makes a little bit more sense. And I thought, when he came back, the mayor actually contacted me and said, is this palatable? And I said, absolutely, at least for me, and it makes a lot more sense. So again, I really just wanted to say thank you to Maureen for that gracious aspect, the understanding, and then the mayor for understanding as well and working for maybe a more appropriate fit for Mrs. Saxon. So with that being said, I will be supporting this tonight. Thanks.
Right, and I will take that as a motion on the resolution then, because, there we go. And just want to note to folks that the resolution is actually, it says that the term expires the 2024. Actually, it expires in 2023, so I will make that just known to the group that that's the term that will be approved. And we'll make those changes to the resolution. So Maureen, thank you very much for your time. If this is approved this evening, please arrange sometime with the city clerk to get sworn in. You don't need to be at City Council at 7:00 to redo this presentation if this passes committee. So once it does, we'll have, just reach out to the clerk's office, and they can schedule in your swearing-in ceremony.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do need to vote.
Yes, but I'm just gonna, okay, wrap that part up. Okay, so seeing no further discussion, the resolution before us is the appointment of Maureen Saxon. the resolution before us is the appointment of Maureen Saxon as an at-large member of the Lansing Entertainment Public Cities Authority with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, very good. Like I said, Maureen, please, after tonight's second vote, if you could arrange time to get sworn in with the clerk. We're looking forward to your service on the LAFPA Board.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next item is the riveting discussion on the general fund status report for FY twenty-one, the third quarter vacancy factor report for FY twenty-one as well. And I think we have Rob and Jake from the Finance and Budget in that order.
Hello, I'm pleased to be back here reporting on the FY twenty-one Budget to Actual Report as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty. Our fiscal year runs from July first to June thirtieth. So this is the last fiscal report you'll receive before the end of the year. So the city ended fiscal year twenty twenty with about ten point one million in general fund reserves. Originally, we had budgeted to deplete that amount for a small amount. As part of the executive budget recommendation for FY twenty-two, we took a revised look at the FY twenty-one budget. And we noted reduced property tax revenues, reduced income tax revenues and increased state revenues. In addition to receiving about seven point three million in federal stimulus funds. Overall, the net impact of this, as of the timing of this report, which again was as of March thirty-first, we projected an ending fund balance of about thirteen point eight million. And these were the figures we used as you were considering the FY twenty-two adopted budget proposal. The city's fund balance recommends a fund balance, or fund balance policy recommends a fund balance between twelve and fifteen percent of expenditures. As of this projected budget amendment, we would be reaching around ten percent. Overall, revenues are about where we expect with the projection as of the FY twenty-two budget proposal. We have some categories which are slightly higher, slightly lower. And you'll notice, however, it's fairly close to what we provide as far as our final budget recommendation. Departments themselves are within their budgetary expectations for this time of year. You'll notice that we have the March thirty-first year-to-date target, which is adjusted for the timing of certain expenditures such as payroll, major contracts and other important items. I know you, I understand that you've had this for a period of around a month or so now. So if you have any questions, I can address those directly.
Thank you, Jake. Yes, I'm sorry. And thank you for your flexibility too, when we ran over the last couple of meetings. Y'all waited for us to conclude, but we've moved you to the next agenda. So I appreciate that flexibility.
You're at your service.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to make sure that I understood what was going on. So could you give me a little bit more specificity about the difference, the ending fund balance of about ten million versus the thirteen million dollar fund balance that had been talked about during budget?
Yeah, so beginning of FY twenty-one, we started the year with a fund balance of about ten point one million dollars with about hundred thirty-two million in revenues, one thirty-six in expenditures. We are projected to decrease our fund balance by about four point six million, which would bring us down to five point four. This number is adjusted for the beginning fund balance as a result of our audited financial statements as of June thirty, twenty twenty. With our adjustments, as we projected the FY twenty-one budget for our FY twenty-two proposal, total revenues were sitting at about one thirty-one million. And as I said, that's a reduction of property tax, income tax, increase to state revenues. Expenditures remaining pretty constant around one thirty-seven million. And then federal stimulus reimbursement at seven point three million. And the resolution of the IRS ACA bills at two point five million. So the sum of the six million revenues minus expenditures plus the federal stimulus, plus the IRS ACA resolution brings us up to about thirteen point eight from that ten point one starting figure.
Tricia, you still have your hand up?
I do, just one more question. So are we saying that starting the FY twenty-two, we will have a thirteen point eight million dollar fund balance? That's what you're saying?
As of the timing of this report, I believe as of the final budget amendment, we had fine-tuned some figures, including some minor adjustments to revenue projections and adjusting the vacancy factor along with other funds, which I believe brings us out slightly further at around fourteen million and change.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll put my hand down. Thank you.
Thank you. That was gonna be my clarifying question was, I think I remember the same thirteen million, but that was for FY twenty-two, correct? We go around there, yes. Okay, Councilmember Jackson, you're up next, sir.
Thank you. So can, since the American CARES Act funds was as much as it was and earmarked for certain things, is that, can we just put as much as we want to the general fund to make it all the way back to the top how we want it? Since there's leftover money?
Oh, there's no leftover money to the CARES Act funds. So there's seven point three million, which we're using to offset public safety expenditures, which have been redirected as a result of COVID. And so as a result of the reduction in revenue, we expect from the projected, the adopted budget we projected, plus the additional revenues, instead of decreasing by four point six million, we are coming out slightly ahead to thirteen point eight million. And so it is important to recognize that the CARES Act stimulus that we received is separate and independent from the ARPA revenues, which are largely used as part of the FY twenty-two budget. And specifically, the ARPA revenues may not be used to restore our fund balance, which is explicit in legislation.
Thank you. I guess I mistake that and I thought that we could restore some of our fund balance, but apparently not. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, to an extent, money is fungible, but we cannot just as a lump sum redirect money into our reserves.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, Jake. So restoring some of those dollars for the public safety is, as we had fire that was giving vaccinations, you know, a number of those things that help offset what those additional costs would have been out of the general fund to pay for this additional overtime for a number of those types of activities. Is that correct?
Yeah, and specifically, the CARES Act grants included the coronavirus relief for local government grants and the Public Safety, Public Health Payroll Reimbursement Program. The latter was specific to the months of April and May, public safety expenditures. We've also received funding from FEMA and other sources. And it was the first responders hazard pay premium program in which we gave a number of our public safety personnel about three hundred eighty of them, one thousand dollar hazard pay bonus as a result of the increased responsibilities that they've been shouldering over the course of the pandemic.
And this also did help pay for equipment and things that we needed for COVID. Is that correct as well? Whether we're talking about additional cleaning or whether we're talking about hazmat material or any of those, correct?
These were largely payroll expenditures, but we did receive grants for PPE equipment and the sort of things that you were discussing there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Jake, looks like those are the questions for that part of the agenda. I don't see action here other than just knowing that it was there. It's been placed on file.
Yeah, and I apologize. I thought I was sharing my screen, but I think I was scrolling through it and just talking about it, so.
Sorry, there was, that was in our packet too. The information that you walked through was in the packet and it's been there for a couple of weeks. Okay, so that will move on to item D, which is a discussion, item, excuse me, a discussion of our bond rating update for the city of Lansing Sewer Enterprise Fund. I do believe we have Mr. Lefler here. Or am I wrong in that, Rob? Is that you?
I'll be, I'll be taking it and then answering any of your questions.
Very good, Rob, go ahead.
So this has kind of been sitting on your docket for a while too as well. But I think the big highlights, according to this memo, and what Moody's said is our credit level has remained the same since February of two thousand fifteen. So this review was self-started by Moody's. And you know, staff or city team was not previously asked for input on this. But how it works is Moody's reaches out and requests us to review the draft press release. And we're given, you know, two, two working hours from the time of Moody's email to tell them if the press release contains any factual errors or inadvertent disclosures in it. And after which then they published the memo that you had before you. So if you have any questions, though, on that memo or the report, Finance is happy to answer any questions.
I trust that, there he is, I sorry, and Councilmember Wood has a question.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to ask, did Mr. Brewer have an opportunity to review this material? Did he have any comments on it?
I believe this material was after Moody's gave it to us, it was reviewed. Unfortunately, I'm sorry, first I'll start up. Unfortunately, it went to my spam box. So we did reach out to Andrew at Moody's after an hour had gone by. And our municipal advisor and myself reviewed it for any factual errors.
Sorry, Rob. I think she was, she meant it, Mr., you might have heard.
Oh, I apologize. I know I do not believe that Moody's reached out to Mr. Brewer.
Eric, you wanna address that? You got your mute.
Yeah, I reviewed it after the fact. I've reviewed the memo that Robert had sent and then also the Moody report. And I concurred with what Moody had expressed in the report. And then, like I said, is, you know, the long-term planning analysis, you know, like I said, it's a steady pace, but, you know, it all depends on economic growth and then obviously the liabilities going forward. So and then also they did point out about the consistency about the city council setting, you know, of setting rates at a consistent pattern. So, but I did review that, but I did after the fact and I didn't have any contact with Moody, you know.
Thank you. Then, Rob, my next question would be, does this take into consideration the rate hike that is considered for the next fiscal year when they did this report?
Yeah, so when Moody's did their review, they used what material was basically what you could find online from Googling or searching our site. So they were able to look at our twenty twenty CAFR and the twenty twenty-two proposed budget, which was on the website at the time of Moody's review. So they should have been able to take them into consideration, yes. And they did know, they did know in the report that the city does continually review and adjust its rates accordingly.
Okay, and was there any consideration about when this report was put together, the fact that we were in the middle of a pandemic and what that might effect have on some of the work that was supposed to have been done during this period of time?
I can't specifically, whoops, sorry, I can't specifically speak to if Moody's took them into consideration. But from, you know, our understanding of just how S and P and Moody's has been operating, yes, they are taking into how operations are during the pandemic, correct?
Okay, thank you. That answers my questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
You, Councilmember Spitzley, I saw your hand up and then it's down. I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you very much. The next item, moving along the way, is budget amendment for FY twenty twenty-one. It's the year-end budget resolution. I'm gonna see the word budget in it and assume it's Jake.
Pulling that up myself, let me share my screen.
TV has a nice marketing, or Sherry always know who's speaking. I gotta, I gotta remember to think ahead.
So on your screen, you'll see the proposed twenty twenty-one budget amendment. As I've said, we've reduced property taxes to
Jake, real quick, before you continue, is it possible to zoom in just a little bit? I'm on a pretty large screen and I'm having trouble.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the language at the top is fairly standard, recognizes that we've received federal grants for CRLGG, PSPHPRP. We're adjusting our revenues for our general fund, one point six million to property taxes, two million for income taxes. An additional three million for state revenues and including additional personal property tax reimbursement that came then earlier last month or the previous month. The majority of other general fund adjustments come in the form of allocating our vacancy factor. Which comes out slightly ahead from the one point four million. Recognizing the federal reimbursement, which is about twenty thousand better than we originally anticipated as far as the FY twenty-two adopted budget. The IRS ACA bills overall. We are projecting, instead of subtracting five point three million from our fund balance, adding about four million. Other adjustments, Stadium Fund, we have adjusted that to account for our contract amendment in coordination with LAFPA and TMO. Cemetery's Fund has additional revenues requiring a slightly smaller subsidy. And the Parking Fund has been adjusted for reduced parking revenues over the course of the pandemic and accounting for the bond proceeds and expenditures that we've done. Are there any questions about the content of this budget proposal?
I don't see hands. Are there any questions from council? Seems to be pretty straightforward. It's the standard year-end closing of the books. So with that, I will ask for a motion for the Vice President to approve the resolution.
Sure, I'm going to to move the resolution. I just want to make sure that on the record, we are recognizing the fact that the dates in the packet are wrong. You guys have been emailed the resolution with the appropriate dates of two thousand and twenty-one, not two thousand and twenty-two. So that's what we'll be looking at at city council tonight. So that being said, I would move the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's proper motion before us to approve the resolution for the end of the year budget amendment for twenty twenty-one. Seeing no further discussion, I'd ask that our clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next item is a double set of resolutions that I will have come for us is Resolution to Public Act four twenty-five, the agreement with DeWitt Township, as well as a resolution to PA four twenty-five, DeWitt Township Amendment. So I do believe we have folks from LEAP here to discuss that in just a minute. If we could pull Chris Klein in and Carl Dorsheimer. There they are. Okay, Chris or Carl or a combination of the two. Let's let's hear a little bit more about the PA four twenty five agreements that we're looking at. I know we've heard about it before. We're just kind of satisfying the thirty day clock on those and then moving those forward. They were amendments to our four twenty fives to allow for an expanded agreement up on the northern end of the city to for a potential industrial site, if I'm not mistaken, and this authorizes that to happen. And if it doesn't, if it falls through for some reason, there's no, the city's off the hook.
Yes, President Spatafor, if I may, it's a four twenty five agreement between the city of Lansing and Dewitt Township, and it would transfer approximately about thirty three acres that's currently in the township into the city of Lansing, similar to other four twenty five agreements that have been done with other townships, including Dewett. And then this would enable that property to be within the city of Lansing and therefore it would be eligible for to be a brownfield and anything, any other incentives which the city would like to, you know, decide to grant. But basically, it just sets the stage it for emergent bio-solutions who's currently located in that area, and it's adjacent to this thirty three acre parcel. It sets the stage for their board to make a decision as to whether to make a large expansion in the city of Lansing and expand their operations here. So this agreement is really is just between the township and the city. And that's the stage. And if approved, then the emergent board can make that decision. If they make the decision to go ahead with the project, then it would be in the city of Lansing. Then they also are expected to ask for a a brownfield plan, which they currently have on their twelve acre site, which is in the city, to be amended to include the new area, which now would become part of the city of Lansing. And I believe they would also ask for a one ninety eight tax abatement, which is fifty percent abatement on building improvements. So but that would come before council, probably either in July or August. And at that time, the company obviously will be present and the details of the project will be presented to council.
Carl, thank you for that summary. I have one quick question. So in anticipation of tax credit package and things like that and redevelopment package, the cost of infrastructure, however, will be borne by the the company, correct?
That is correct. And anything, any costs borne by the border water light or the city are reimbursable through the brownfield plan and will essentially be reimbursed by the new taxes created by the new investment by emergent.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Carl, has the township adopted this yet?
They have. They have approved it, and they've had their public hearing, and they're waiting for their thirty day period to to basically and which would end on the twenty fourth of June, so in three days. So with the approval tonight and with their approval and those thirty days for the township, then this agreement can be executed on the twenty fourth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I will ask for a motion on item G, which is the Public Act four twenty five agreement.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Let the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl, I don't anticipate you needing to be there this evening, but I'm sure you will be just to make sure we do our job for you. Okay.
I will be.
Right. Then the next item is item H, which is the four twenty five amendment, Mr. Vice President.
So moved.
Okay, proper motion before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Um, yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. That does conclude the business before the committee of the whole. Just want to let you all know, we anticipated this may have taken a little longer than it did. So we moved our discussion on the city's reopening plan from county to council, and we're gonna have the mayor address that during the mayor's comments. And I believe our deputy mayor Tate will be there as well. But as you're aware, today is the last day under epidemic orders that govern mask and gathering restrictions. So that will guide our return to normalcy, somewhat normalcy, excuse me, at city hall on the twelfth of July after our state of emergency expires. So we'll hear about that at the next meeting, which will begin in one hour and four minutes. And my husband tells me there's dinner, so I'm gonna grab dinner and I'll see you all at seven.